Okay, you're good Emily, I can announce that 5:35 we will start the Community Power Public Hearing.
Okay, thank you Andy. So I wasn't sure whether Lou would like to give an introduction, but I'm happy to get started, shall I Lou?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea since we only have a half an hour.
Okay, and then would it help if I share my screen, or do you have slides there to look at?
If you would share your screen, that would be helpful because I can't run the slides and you at the same time.
No problem, here we go.
Does somebody want to introduce her?
Yes.
Hello, can you see my screen, it should say Town of Lee, Community Power Public Hearing?
We can, Lou is going to give you an introduction Emily.
So I'm Lou Grandin, 14 hour length. I'm the Chairman of the Energy Committee and the newly formed Community Power Committee. And this is a public hearing, basically an explanation of what Community Power is. It's going to be very short. And basically, we are working with a company called Standard Power, who is going to be our consultant. And the person that is working with us is named Emily Mans. She lives in Peterborough, which is about an hour and a half away. So we're trying to do this on Zoom, and that's her on the screen there, and she will be doing the explaining for today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Lou. Yes, so as Lou said, I am Emily Mans of Standard Power. And we are a full-service energy broker that decided to... Well, we provide services to municipal and commercial customers, industrial customers. And when Community Power was coming to New Hampshire, we teamed up with a company called Good Energy that is experienced in doing Community Power services. And we now have 12 communities we're working with. So Lee is one of seven that is going to... Is looking at Community Power for 2023. And this is our first public hearing in Lee, but I hope you've seen, had the opportunity to see some information in the e-cryer, maybe around town about Community Power. So this slide's just a little bit about the committee, and they've been needing diligently for several weeks to work through the details. Starting with a mission statement. The Lee Community Power Committee mission statement is to take steps to save money and to advance sustainability goals for Lee residents and small businesses. So I think these slides are going to be posted on the town website. So I won't go through each one in detail, but you can get more information there. We'll just do an overview for you today and then open it up to questions. So what?
You've muted yourself Emily, I think.
Did you tell her that we can't hear her? Wait there maybe? Uh oh. Maybe wave at her to stop or something. Oh, we don't have a camera on, sorry.
Give her a chat.
Turn on your face Andy. Turn on your face, wave at her.
Let's see.
It's been a fight today, huh Andy?
Can you hear her say?
Anyone text her and tell her we can't hear her so she doesn't keep going on?
Just have to call, I guess.
You can call her, yeah, because she doesn't know that we can't hear her, yeah.
Can you use the chat function too?
Yeah, that's great. You're calling her? She's probably going to ignore her like a good person. No, she disappeared.
I don't know if she's going to answer that.
End of the Zoom, she will.
She's still talking away.
Right? It's so good when it works.
Yeah, I think at this point I have completely lost her.
Do we have her slide shots? Can Lou and I help you? Can anyone else help you?
Yes, I can surely run through her slideshow.
Great.
You got her back, she's right there.
Oh, you got her back.
She probably doesn't even know we left her.
No, she hasn't.
Can we unmute?
Ask to unmute. So if you click the... yeah, click on that, three.
View options above, didn't you?
Chat options.
View options, yeah, we did hide.
She's not letting me... Yeah, I think because she's sharing her screen, I've lost the ability. Effectively controls.
You can stop her share in the view options.
Oh yeah.
No, 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 up in the top middle, yeah. Hit that stop for just been sharing in red.
There you go.
She's looking now, she realizes what happened. Yeah, she knows what's going on now. Yep.
Yeah, so leave a message because she's looking at her phone.
Emily, if you're listening to your phone, you're muted, so we can't hear a thing you're saying.
It's not that she's muted though, it's the speaker. It's us, not her. It's us.
Oh, it's us?
Either way, she knows something's wrong.
The Zoom isn't recognizing whatever speaker you have hooked up to the Zoom.
Yeah.
Go down, go down and click audio. Says fail to detect your speaker, click the little... Alright, now... What are you using? Is it the splitter, is it coming out of your HDMI?
I do not believe so, no, it's just I have the microphone kicked down in front of my... I was just using the computer audio.
It worked in that stuff, it was working. Could it not detect it after a little while because she's so quiet?
No.
I don't think that's the problem, it's just the computer audio speakers that should be.
Hello, we're just having some technical difficulties.
Oh, okay.
Just close out the program, close out the whole thing, then go back in.
Andy, should we just start talking about what it is so we can get at least some information everybody?
Yeah, and I can go with the... let me see if I can get the slideshow on here.
Okay.
Yeah, and perhaps you could even open it up to questions really soon.
Yeah, that's true.
At least we would know what's most on people's minds.
That's a great idea. Lou, would you like to do a quick recap, or does anyone else want to?
Well...
Three-minute version? Alright, there we go.
These are slides, although Emily did tell me previously that there may be typographical errors in these slides.
Alright, so please forgive our typographical errors, but we'll just try to get the information to you as quickly as possible.
Well, I think the easiest... The clearest thing... The clearest way to understand this, I think, is to go through the frequently asked questions and the answers.
Do we want to start at the very beginning, or should people even know what it is?
Yeah, the first question is, okay, well, yeah. What is Community Power? What is Community Power? Community Power is a new program in New Hampshire where a municipality... Oops, now Emily's...
Apologize.
Calling me. Emily? Yeah, it stopped working, so... You going to try to send her a new one?
At this point Lou, I think you might be better just to go through the slides yourself.
Yeah, okay. I'm just gonna do what I can do, and then you can... Yeah. You can bring up the first slide if you want.
Lou.
Yeah, you could put her on the speakerphone.
You can put her on speaker. Through the phone.
My speakerphone?
Yeah.
Oh. Not very loud.
Ask her to knock.
Emily?
Yes.
If you hold her close to your microphone there.
Is this microphone on?
Yes, but she's not able to see me at this.
So let her know.
Well, can you put it on the first slide?
It's on the first slide.
Okay, so it's on the first slide, but this mic isn't on.
Lou, are you presenting or am I?
I think you can present now, if you want to talk about the first slide.
We missed everything.
So I'm very sorry that... so... You think the Lee Community Power Committee slide?
No. Keep on going, she made... we went through that.
That is, it's the introductory slide.
It's the introductory slide. It says first meeting May 2022. You probably want to... You want to start it up?
Okay. Okay.
And we can hear you really well.
Okay, good. Well, tell me then if I'm speaking too loudly. So the Lee Community Power Committee had its first meeting in May of 2022. The town contracted with Standard Power to help the town and the committee through the Community Power planning process. So there are a number of steps, and one of them is to formally appoint a Community Power Committee as separate permanent energy committee, and so that was done on November 28. There are six community members, and there are public meetings on Tuesdays at 10:30. And I believe three of the four Tuesdays in January have public meetings. So those would be additional opportunities to learn more, to ask questions, to interact with the committee, to find out more about Community Power as we go through this process towards the March Town Meeting. So the next slide please.
Mission, we're on missions.
So the mission... The mission of the committee is to take steps to save money and to advance sustainability goals for Lee residents and small businesses. That is consistent with the Community Power Program, and so we're pursuing the details of that in the Community Power Plan. I believe these slides will be posted on the town website, so I'm not going to go through all of them in detail. But if you want to read more about the mission of the Community Power Committee, then do visit their page on the Town of Lee website. Next slide please.
What is Community Power?
So Community Power is where the municipality purchases electricity for residents and small businesses. The goals are cost savings and more renewable energy. And the transmission and distribution, emergency services, and billing all stay with the distribution utility. So in Lee, that is, you might have Eversource as your distribution utility, or the New Hampshire Co-op, but they continue to respond to outages, to do emergency services, and do billing. Community Power only affects the supply line on a customer's bill. Next slide please.
Secure competitive pricing.
So there are two reasons that Community Power programs are popular and successful. And the first one is better pricing than the utility default. We pool together residents' demand, and then we use regular broker tools, which include market tithing and contract length, to get significant savings for small customers that otherwise don't have the market power to get such favorable pricing. Next slide please. So this slide just shows that the power of a competitive market for a customer that's a little bit bigger than... that might be typical for pooling residents, or in any cases. It's just an example where it shows that the utility default rate changes every six months and goes up and down. But the... with... Using the competitive market of customer, in this case it's a municipal customer, can get better rates over years, and over hundreds of years. Next slide please.
Local renewable energy.
So the second reason that Community Power programs are popular is that you can add local renewable energy into your electricity supply, and you can also provide choices for residents. So one resident doesn't have to choose the same choice as their neighbor. So there are two ways that Community Power programs support local renewable energy. One is that they use established markets for renewable energy, that's called renewable energy credits or certificates, RISs. And the other is program choices for the default service and for optional program options. Next slide please.
More benefits.
And then it can provide more benefits, including local control, consumer protections that are not available to individual customers that get competitive supply. And then perhaps more education and awareness for people to understand their energy use and costs and ways to save money. And maybe, and maybe energy planning as well. Next slide please.
Lee Community Survey.
So the survey?
Yes, this is a survey.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I've had a great response from Lee, 104 responses. And this slide shows the responses. So in Lee, all responses that we received were for residential customers. So the committee talked about visiting local businesses and just making them aware of the program. The benefits accrue to all small customers, so it's not... This really is a typical... usually we have one or two business owners that respond, but this is pretty typical to have very dominant residential response. And then just some other... most people own their home. They... 63% were Eversource customers, 30% New Hampshire Electric Co-op. Then we had a... and we just had a variety of ages and income levels. We really collect demographics only to ensure that we are reaching a variety of constituents and different demographics. We don't really design the program around these results, we just want to make sure that we had a broad response. And then for communications, the town website and Facebook were the most popular, but mail and email would also be effective for some customers. So next slide please.
Yeah, next part of the community survey.
So the survey, the pie chart shows the answer to would you like more renewable energy in your electric supply? And so, just over 50% said they would like more electric supply, more renewable energy in their electric supply, if it could be, at least not more than they pay today. So that... So 28% they would like more renewable energy if they can pay about the same as they would today. 20% said they would pay a little bit more, and about 5% of the population said they would like 100% at renewable energy in their electric supply, and they are willing to pay for it. And then about a third of the respondents, 34%, said that they would like the best cost that we could get, regardless of the renewable energy, and about 13% had no opinion on this question. So we use the survey and other public input to design a program. Next slide please.
Yeah, the Zoom insurance.
So right now, customers have two choices. One is most people are on the Eversource, or not Eversource, but the utility default service. But you can also go on competitive supply, the Community Power Program, and a new default for the program, plus some optional products. Next slide please.
Product options.
So the new default is chosen by the program, and by the... Based on what the committee decides the community would like. We were proposing in the draft plan that we add a little bit more renewable energy, 5% to 10% more renewable energy, and then provide three options. One is the best cost, or the best price we can deliver, and then two higher renewable energy options. Next slide please.
Example Somerville community choice.
So I don't know if you can see this slide, but so I'll just describe it quickly. It shows it has a jagged blue line that is the Eversource utility default rate in a program in Massachusetts. So I'll start again here. There are no operating programs in New Hampshire, so this is a real program from Massachusetts that's been operating since 2017. Like in New Hampshire, the utility default rate changes every six months. And so there's a bluetwenty line that shows the utility default. There's a green line that shows the program default. And there's an orange line that shows the best price available in that program. So if you have... if you can see this slide at all, you'll just notice that the bluetwenty line is above the program lines, the green and the orange line consistently through the program, except for one six-month period at the beginning of COVID. So the program savings are substantial, but the program doesn't promise savings in every period. But we do provide savings over time, and that's our experience, and the experience of hundreds of programs that use a similar method to what we do across the country. So, and in New England and across the country. So the next slide please.
Community Power highlights, yeah.
Yeah, so this is just to make sure that we hit all the points. So customers can opt-out, join, or change products at any time for no fee or cost or anything. So there's a flexibility there for individual customers to come and go from the program. It provides choices, so you don't need to make the same choice as your neighbor or the next town over. You can choose what's right for your household or your business at that time. Low-income customers keep their full benefits. So the calculation of low... of benefits for low-income customers, low-income electricity customers, are calculated separate from Community Power, and they just... they remain. So low-income customers can get the benefits of the program as well as their current benefits. And then net metering customers will do as well or better than the current tariff. We... they participate in the program, which is, will give them a better rate if they are a net user of power. We can talk more about net metering customers if somebody is interested. And then there's the opportunity to work on other local initiatives, and of course, there's no cost to the municipal budget for a program. Next slide please.
Timeline.
So the timeline. The Town of Lee is in the process of finalizing, or drafting and finalizing, a Community Power Plan. It then goes to the town voters to, you know, to vote on the plan, to move that forward. After that, it goes to the state for the Public Utility Commission approval. Lee's plan is similar to plans that have passed at the Public Utility Commission, so we expect that process to go smoothly, but the Public Utility Commission has 60 days to make that determination. And then we go... there's a series of steps towards launch. So we work with the town to do an electric service agreement. We... and then go to suppliers to procure electricity. We implement a public education and opt-out campaign. And then when everybody in the community is fully aware of the program, then the program is launched. And eligible customers are automatically enrolled in the program, but customers that are currently on competitive supply are not automatically enrolled. And then there's a period of ongoing customer support for customers who come and go, who have questions. There's ongoing customer support. So that's... so next slide is just my question slide. If... If you want to go to the next slide, and I can take some questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Hey, I'm Matt from Turrapon Road. So I saw the chart, I don't know if you want to go back to the kind of chart of the energy prices. It looks like, you know, obviously, the price of everything shot up with the war in Ukraine, and you know, the price of fuel kind of shot up as a result of that. Can you... I wonder if Emily can talk about kind of why that is? Like if we locked in a price now, would it be at the higher amount? And why is Community Power a little bit lower than the basic rate?
Did you hear that Emily? The question was what... oh, you did? Okay.
Well, I'll restate that the question is what... Well, actually, I heard two questions, but one is why electricity rates are high now, and then why Community Power can do better?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so you've said one of the factors that makes electricity rates high now, which is the war in Ukraine, is creating global demand for natural gas. So domestic prices for gas have not been set globally because we are constrained with export capacity. So the more export capacity the United States builds, the more vulnerable we will be to global natural gas prices. For now, New England is still susceptible to high global gas prices because if, at peak times in the wintertime, we actually import liquefied natural gas into New England for peak times, because we compete with heating, with gas for heating. So New England is vulnerable, that's why we have high rates. Residents only pay a single rate, we're not subject to the locational mean pricing, so we don't see the ups and downs, we don't see that sometimes the prices are negative at night. Sometimes the prices are 100 times what we regularly enjoy. The suppliers have to take all that risk. They purchase supply contracts, they contract with, you know, suppliers, and they... And so the utility gets a... has a deep... and so the utility gets a, has a default contract with the supplier, but they purchase it in a, in a very tight window, and they have to purchase it for six months. So that makes their rate quite vulnerable to whatever is going on in that very short period of time. We, the town and we are not bound to that kind of pricing window, we can do market timing. We won't launch a program unless we are confident that the program will have savings over the contract period. And the contract period, although we often write contracts for, you know, between eighteen months and, you know, you know, twenty-four months is a very common length of a contract, we're not bound to that. So if we can do a little better by making it a little longer, a little shorter, then we can do that. And, and this is just our business, I mean, competitive supply for commercial and industrial customers is really very established. And we're just bringing that power to residents and small customers, by residents and businesses, by bundling it together and making it an attractive package for suppliers to bid on, and so then they give you attractive rates for your commercial customers.
Yes.
Paul Gazowski, Late Relate. I gotta ask some tough questions, but they're on my mind. Is this a contract with the town, or is this a series of individual contracts with the users?
Is this a contract with the town, or is it a contract with the individual users?
It's a contract with the town. So the, it's a contract with the town, but the town doesn't take ownership of the power. It's a, it's a, it's a contract, it's an agreement for a community power program.
In, in the worst-case scenario, and it's a fair question to ask, in a failsafe, if, if Standard Power has financial problems, what happens?
So the contract is not with Standard Power, it's with a top national supplier. But if the top national supplier had a problem, then the customer, you know, worst-case scenario, and it's a completely fair question, it's a great question. If that happened, then the customers just go back to default supply, and the program, the program would just sit there, or it, there are terms in the law and in the plan about what happens in that instance. So possibly the program would terminate, more likely the program would find a new supplier and write a new contract.
So.
That's a completely fair question. Customers do, we're not taking responsibility for providing the power for you. The utility will still deliver the power, ISO New England still balances all of the electricity supply. This is a supply contract to get you better rates.
Does the town have a legal responsibility?
Does, does the town have a legal responsibility?
Not for, not financially, there's no financial impact on the town. Does that answer your question, or?
Well, should the town's attorney be reviewing this contract?
Should the town's attorney be reviewing the contract?
Sure, the, the town's attorney would review the contracts. I mean, maybe Andy could answer that question. This is, yes, I would imagine the attorney would review a contract.
Yeah, yeah, we could certainly have town council take a look at any contract before the board signed it.
I just want to say one thing, when you asked a few questions down, Emily said that if Standard Power could deliver power, then it would go to default. Did you meant it would automatically go to the utilities default?
Yes, and that's, as I said, you were not contracted with Standard Power, we're a broker, we don't, we don't sign a contract with the town. The town signs a contract with a top national supplier, so we do not anticipate any, any failure of your program. But if it happened, then the, all the customers just go back to utility default, thank you for the clarification, yeah.
So we're kind of running out of time.
I really do need to.
Do you want to give the next dates, because we do have more time to talk about it?
What's that?
Do you want to give the next few dates, because you have two more times to talk about?
Yeah, we, the Energy Committee is going to do another public hearing, this time in the daytime. It's gonna be at ten thirty, next Tuesday morning, the seventeenth, January seventeenth, downstairs, probably. And so we don't have a time limit there, so if you want to spit, and Emily will be there to answer questions and do more presenting. And so we have lots of time, if you want to come back then. And I believe we'll probably be talking about it at the deliberative session, because there's a warrant article for community power, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions.
That's February fourth.
Yeah. So.
We can, and I'm happy to answer anybody's questions anytime. So Lou, if you want to give my email address to people, I'm fine with that, or they could contact you. I'm, I'm happy to answer people's questions. There's no, like, you know, wrong or hard questions, these are, these are great. Thank you for helping, everybody.
Thanks, Emily. I guess we'll sign off. So, yeah, Emily lives in Peterborough, and she was going to come, I don't know why she's not. Something in the car or something, but I think this kind of worked out pretty well with the slides. Thanks to the suggestion from Eric and your help.
Appreciate that.
We'd love to have you stay, we're having a forward budget meeting.